Thank you. I call the order of City of Petoskey City Council for December fifth, two thousand twenty-two. I ask that you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Sarah Beck, would you call roll?
Demore.
Present.
Shields.
Here.
Wagner is absent. Walker.
Present.
Murphy.
Present. We have a quorum. Next, would you like to do introductions? I'd like to introduce Public Safety Director Breed. He's going to introduce three individuals that he's worked with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a few moments of your time to introduce you to a couple of new faces. So that you can put a face with the name as well as a face that I believe most of you have met before. Alexis and Connor, would you stand up, please? I'd like to introduce our two newest officers. Alexis Peacock is from Harbor Springs and she worked a park security job with us this summer. Alexis had already obtained her Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice through Ferris and was interested in a full-time position with the Public Safety Department. We ended up sponsoring Alexis through the academy and on Friday we attended her graduation from the Kirtland Police Academy. This morning, she was sworn in by the city clerk and is our most recent addition. Alexis Peacock is our Public Safety Officer. Slightly taller than Lexi is Connor Kish. Connor grew up in Grand Blank and went to school at Ferris. He obtained his Bachelor's Degree from Ferris and began his criminal justice degree with Blackman Leoni Township Public Safety Department. While he was there, he became a certified firefighter. So Connor comes to us, both MCOS and firefighter wanting to certify. And we're going to, once we get him through his field training program, we'll get him started with his EMT training. Connor started on October thirty-first, so he's been here slightly longer than Lexi, but please welcome Connor Kish. We're very hopeful. They're both very good candidates. Lieutenant Carr, I believe most of you know Lieutenant Adrian Carr. The city manager has delegated Adrian as the interim director upon my retirement. Both bittersweet, but Lieutenant Carr has been with us for a little over sixteen years. Over twelve of those years, he's been a supervisor here. He has a Bachelor's Degree from Lake Superior State University and he also has a Master's in Business Administration. To show you the level of Rocky's dedication to our department, when we undertook the whole accreditation program, Rocky was first to step up and say he'd be the accreditation manager. So the reason that we are an accredited, an accredited department is largely because of Rocky's efforts. So I'm very, very confident in the abilities and the leadership skills of Lieutenant Carr.
Okay, he's known. Okay. First, I just wanted to thank for that opportunity. And I figured I should address the Adrian Rocky thing. My name is Adrian Rocko Carr, has nothing to do with it. As the story goes, my mother took me to the dentist office when I was just a little and the receptionist came out and said, if Adrian is ready, you can bring her back. So after that, I was known as Rocky. But tonight isn't about me, it's about Director Breed and his three decades of service to this community. And it's just an amazing achievement. I've had the honor to work alongside him, underneath him, I mean, and it's just really been been an honor and I'm appreciative for the opportunity and I'll do my best. Thank you.
First off, we really chain released a public statement on your retirement. And we both had glowing things to say about you and I guess my summary of mine would be, you know, you've brought a calmness and you've brought brought a relationship between the residents and the police officers and the police staff that I think needed to be built more. And I see that you've done that. And it's, I'm very appreciative of it and I know I've had comments about some of your, the people you have hired in the past, the job they're doing, whether it's at the high school or whether it's on a traffic stop and the fairness that you guys bring. And I know that's because of your leadership.
Thank you.
And I have full confidence that Rocky is going to be able to carry on your tradition and your legacy. So thank you very much for what you've done for the city.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Your kind words and the city manager's kind words. It's been a journey. I leave you in capable hands, though.
Mr. Moore.
Well, first of all, I want to say how much I appreciate your constructive problem solving. I think that's the key to solving problems in a constructive way. But in particular, I'm going to take just this moment because I was contacted today by Carla Sherman. And she asked that I read this if you were present this evening, the public safety folks. It's been several weeks now since my most remarkable and courageous neighbors called nine-one-one as they saw flames shooting from the Moss family home and from my home on one oh five Division Street. I was in Botswana enjoying a trip that had been rescheduled from the pandemic. Truly, words fail in trying to properly thank the volunteers and the staff of Petoskey Public Safety. And my dear neighbors, it was a remarkable moment, a confirmation of courageous community of care and compassion and kindness in action. My heartfelt thanks, Carla Sherman. Thank you.
Very kind. Thank you.
Derek. Mayor, Director Breed, I just wanted to say thank you for your service and I hope you feel some deep, very deep satisfaction for all you've provided our community. And thank you, Lieutenant Carr. Looking forward to working with you.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Breed, for your decades of service. You've left our city in a really good position and with a handful of really well-trained and integrated members of your staff in our community. So really grateful for those years and looking forward to a future of service of of the legacy that remains. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know we're going to have these comments for another month, but you're going to have to stand up there and take it. So I certainly appreciate the last six months getting to know Director Breed. I think when I first mentioned it to me, I somewhat was somewhat offended, like, is it, is it me or what do I do? We have a, we have a great, we do have a great working relationship and I appreciate when I, when the opportunity I've had with Director Breed, I would say, you know, grace under fire and sometimes literally fire, but having that quiet kindness about you, just that steady as you go. I certainly have appreciated that. I found a quote that I think you know, is something that I think, I think of you when I think of this quote. It's from General Omar briefly. He says, "The greatness of a leader is measured by the achievements of the led." And I think that speaks volumes of you and when you look, when I look back on your service and the team that you've assembled, how you have grown them, come alongside them, led them personally and professionally. You know, that's a credit to you as a leader and as a man and just I've enjoyed the last seven months and then I hopefully you'll, you'll continue to stop in and I'm sure you will to make sure things are continuing. But thank you for the opportunity to work alongside you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your This doesn't happen, but maybe once a year at the most, every three, four years, and that's how much we think of you.
Thank you. It's deeply appreciated.
Now, let's move on to consent, consent agenda and it's the adoption of a proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following. The November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two regular session, city council meeting minutes has well acknowledged a receipt of certain chips, certain administrative transactions had ever occurred since November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And I take it to council for discussion or adoption. Concerns?
Some of it.
I'll second the motion there.
Sure, from this, a second from Ms. Walker. Sarah, would you give us roll?
Demore.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Shields.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
We're going to come into public comment. This is your opportunity, whether it be online or be up in front of us at the speakers platform to speak on anything that hopefully that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, I ask that you wait if possible so that you can become a part of the process. Otherwise, if there's something that you wish to address to city council, please step up, give us your full name and your full address and we will give you time to talk to the council.
If there's none.
Well, you'll have a chance to have the agenda item to speak at that point. Yes. Yes.
John, so we missed this under Nikki Devitt. Do you want to read the last?
So, thank you to the entire team of Petoskey Public Safety. Thank you, Chief Breed for all you have done for our community and looking forward to the next generation. We are also lucky to have you all. That was from Nikki Devitt, who is Chamber Leader, Director. Thank you, Nikki. There being no public comments at this time, other than that, I'll go to city manager horn for updates.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be pulling this up briefly. Certainly wish Lexi and Connor, we were able to, like, as Director Breed mentioned, have her swearing-in ceremony this morning, but just very pleased with having both of those new faces on board and in the direction that that department is headed in. Certainly look forward to working closely with Lieutenant Carr as we move forward. And I know he's going to be absorbing all of Matt's tidbits of wisdom over the next month and a half. So we look forward to that. But continuing to celebrate birthdays and work anniversaries within city staff, it's a little lighter month for both. But Bob Nichols, Public Works Birthday on the fourteenth. Mary, I can't read that print, print. And Tara, thank you. Library, also on the fourteenth, Scott Goziak, Public Safety, the seventeenth, and Tyler Hart, Parks and Rec on Christmas Day. Three work anniversaries this month. Ed Smith, Parks and Rec, twenty-six years. Larry Donovan, Public Safety, twenty-one years. And Terry Bennett with Public Works, twenty-one years this month in December. Few meetings this week. We do have a ZBA meeting tomorrow night. That's the sixth of December at seven PM here in this room. This is one item on the agenda, a really, really odd set night variance. This is for two twelve West Mitchell Street. Parks and Rec Commission Meeting next Monday at their normal date and time, seven PM. And then Planning Commission and DMB will have a joint meeting on December thirteenth at six PM. We also have established a board of review. That will be Thursday, December fifteenth at eleven AM. That notice has gone out as well. I put this back on, just as a reminder, it's on our website. Seasonal parking restrictions are in place currently and will remain in place until April first. So we have the even and odd scenarios. If your address is an even number or an odd number, it correlates to the day of the week being an odd or even day. So making sure that our residents are aware of this. Many of them, this is not a new thing. We've been doing this since, how long have we been doing this? Number of years. So I think, hopefully folks have it, have it down. Okay. Okay. Few things to highlight. Hopefully folks have gotten this mailer. This is our winter sports program going into twenty twenty-three. Talks about all of our leagues, all of our programming from a recreation standpoint that folks can take advantage of. So we certainly hope folks look into this, sign up for classes, rec programs and take advantage of the great services that our Parks and Rec Department provides our community. So this week also, we're happy to push this out for our friends at the Petoskey Chamber. They have their annual celebration of Champions Night. This one is going to be at the Great Lakes Center for the Arts. This is Wednesday, the seventh. You can see the times that that'll start. So this is really highlighting and celebrating some small business owners and others in the community that have really rose to the top over the past year. So we're anxious to celebrate alongside them come Wednesday. So looking forward to that. And I'm going to let the mayor talk about this one. You want to talk about this, Mayor? This is your initiative and we'll let you talk about it.
I've been traveling around the state and into Ohio. And my sister said to me one day, she said, "How come you guys don't have this?" And they've, she was telling me how I kind of build up in their neighborhood, their city. And it's a holiday light contest. And it's, what I'm asking is if you want, we're going to judge you whether you want, if you don't want it to be looked at, leave your lights off on the sixteenth and the seventeenth from six till nine. Otherwise, judges that have yet to be appointed are come forward. But we have six categories. Each category is worth a hundred dollars of gift certificates. And that's mostly the restaurants for the most part. A one hundred dollar downtown bucks to be spent any place, dollar bucks. Okay. And the best of show is two hundred dollar prize. That's somebody donated two hundred dollars towards it. Wanted to be anonymous at this point. So we have about seven hundred dollars worth of prizes out there. So hopefully people will turn their lights on those two nights. Next city council meeting will announce the winners. Also, I've worked with the Emmett Express, Copy Express by, and that fetus. And she's going to be making six signs that'll go in your yard that you are a winner of the contest. That will put it in your yard and stay up there for a bit. So I just thought it's something to bring out. We have enough snow and lights. Let's, let's have fun with it. So here we go. Mr. Derek.
Mayor, my five-year-old has, twice in this last couple of days. Ew. Ah, it's, so I know he definitely appreciates that.
And he would be a judge this year.
Is it just town to bruise and haves as weather that's up there? Okay. Yeah, this will be exciting, I think.
Just to stay on that theme, I, this was my first the open house, holiday open house, forgot what we call it. Really impressive just to stand around and watch people mill around and, you know, try to get into stores. Was sometimes challenging just with the number of people around. I mean, and certainly thank you to to Public Works, Mike and his crew with the Electric Department, Becky and her staff with, and the downtown management board. These things don't just happen. There's a lot of planning involved to make all this work. So I certainly appreciate staff and their commitment to provide this opportunity and our small business owners, our downtown business owners really going, putting that red carpet out. I felt like, you know, every store I went into, I was, I was their most valuable customer because of the way they treated you and just, just the food that was available to enjoy as you walked around and seeing all the families, the young ones walking around was, was pretty special. And I've always heard this was a pretty special evening and to experience that firsthand was, was really neat. And I look forward to more of those as we move forward. So thank you to everyone that was involved. What a, what a wonderful evening and it was, it was a very enjoyable. I was also eager to participate along with council member Walker, council member Shields and council member Wagner was there as well. County Commissioner Dave White obviously is in the photo as well. Northern northern homes is putting together, we'll be putting up two affordable homes. This is on Bridge and Fulton Street. So we're able to do a groundbreaking this week for that. So this will be homes that, to qualify for for this, for these homes, you're going to be, need to be around eighty percent of the median income of our area. So it's affordable housing. These will be remain that way. They will not be able to be transitioned into short-term rentals. These will be in perpetuity going forward. These will be affordable homes long-term, you know, based on the land trust that these homes will be in. So pretty exciting. Need to see infill in areas as well. So we're excited to see what that's going to look like going forward. Also, I didn't put a slide up, but we did have Baird in town today. They completed their initial, they did some drone work today on the smoke area. They were able to really take advantage of a pretty decent day without snow cover to really get some good footage. As they, as you recall, a couple of weeks back, they were here and was a pretty nasty day, but they had their boat in and doing hydrographic work on the, on the shoreline. So as you also know, at the last meeting, you approved us to proceed with a grant opportunity that has been submitted to the coastal, for a coastal high water grant opportunity to help us potentially pay for the engineering and design of the smoke restoration and wheelway project. So that is ongoing as well. So we're excited to get some of that. Some of that needed work done before the weather really starts taking a turn on us on a regular basis. So they were able to complete that assignment today. So any questions for me?
Counsel. Sounds good. Now moving right along. Next is the appointments, consideration of appointments to the downtown management board and to the planning commission. First, I bring to you Gary Albert, who served out a partial term. Gary owns Rough World.
Rough Life.
Rough Life. Dog World. Because now I don't have a dog. But he's done a great job. He's very, he participates on these boards, expresses his his ideas and they're very valuable. And I bring his name for consideration.
Take the motion, Mayor, to accept Gary Albert's reappointment to the downtown management.
To downtown management board. Support.
A motion for Ms. Walker, second from Mr. Moore. Any other discussion, counsel? I take it to Sarah for roll.
Walker, yes. Demore, aye. Shields.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Next, Jennifer Shorter. I bring her name up. Very involved with Shorters, as you know, owner. KB did, is it next door? A quite intricate part. Even when she wasn't on the downtown management board, she was still not just giving ideas and but also first in line to be putting in stuff for prizes and donations, participating. She's a true Petoskey. I'm going to call her girl because I know her since she was a six, but a woman. She's true Petoskey all the way through and so I'm bringing her name. Mr. Shields.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Shorter for the downtown management board.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? I go to Ms. Ecker for roll.
Shields.
Yes.
Walker, yes. Demore, aye. Murphy.
Yes. The last one I bring to you is Matt McSweeney. He served on the ZBA. There's an opening on the planning commission. I feel he would be a real asset. I know I've heard comments that he has been very constructive in his comments at the ZBA, very knowledgeable, does his research. I know that in talking to him, when he talked to me, he said, "Well, here's some of the stuff I've read about planning," et cetera. So I realize that he has a real interest and passion. So I bring forward, he works at, he's a teacher at Petoskey High School, lives on basement with his wife and two kids. Mr. Shields.
Make a motion to approve Mr. McSweeney for the planning commission. Support.
A motion for Mr. Shields, second from Mr. Moore. Any other discussion?
I have a little question.
Yes.
Thank you. Can you tell me will Mr. McSweeney simultaneously be serving on the ZBA and, no, okay. So, firm with the ZBA and, oh, resigning. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Not effective now because.
Not now, but we need, we need him tomorrow for the
I tell you what.
He can be on both.
I was just curious.
I served that way about twenty years ago. I thought they disbanded it. Okay, well, there we go.
All right.
But he is going to resign from that. I know he does not want to be on both boards. So if you have an idea, please get, get it to me for the ZBA. Seems like every, well, we have an issue coming up tomorrow on ZBA. It's been occurring more and more. So I think it's a very good board to have to keep our community it's moving forward, progressive, but yet at the same point, being visual of where we're at. Ms. Beck.
Shields.
Yes.
Demore, aye. Walker, yes. Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, for supporting me on these three appointments. Next is old businesses, the discussion of a proposed ordinance that would amend the sign ordinance, allow for payroll that is signed. For that, I'll move it over to
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been on a couple of different times, just giving a little bit of history. And certainly, I don't know if that has a battery, but we can get you a battery. This obviously came before Planning Commission first back in September fifteen. They did provide a unanimous approval at that particular time. There was some discussion about having the design committee and how that whole process maybe should have worked. And so we kind of hit pause, backed up a little bit. Were able to get the design committee together. They did review it. Their recommendation was to not allow it in the downtown Their recommendation was to not allow it in the downtown uh area, I I don't. I don't know that they actually took a position citywide, obviously, they're more, their their focus is to downtown. So their recommendation was to um not allow it downtown. Sign uh committee also approved it, um. So. We really need to get some direction from Council, you can. Do a couple of things, you can either approve the proposed ordinance amendment. To allow for. Halo lit signs as proposed. Um based on Planning Commission's initial recommendation. Or you can make an amendment. For our direct staff to to proceed with an amendment which would kind of reset the public hearing process, um. And provide that direction to us this evening as well. Obviously, Zach, our planning director is here, he can answer any questions, concerns and fill in any any details.
Council. Mister Shields.
My question is, so the, what I understand from the downtown. Uh design committee, some of their objection to the halo signs is uh that they are not. Contingent or um consistent with. The quaint downtown character. And so I I I just, I don't. I'm trying to understand that more, uh and and maybe that's something that um as Zach can answer about uh. How how is a how is a lighted sign? Um. How is that? Fit with a quaint downtown character, is it a historical thing, is it a, is it a um? It's a resistance to to change in new, or is there is there a a uh a change in character from these signs? So from the downtown design committee's perspective, uh it it was more of a historical aspect, there's and. There was also arguments for the the small quaint downtown as well. Um there is plenty of of stuff in the master plan that cites. Historic um character, things like that, there's just as many for su- supporting new local business, new ideas. Economic vibrant futures, I mean, the list goes on, so. To say one is right and the other is wrong, I think would. Not be fair, it's it's very much in the middle, um master plan. Really I hate for both. Thank you.
Have you done any research on historic? Uh. Character. Of these lights of this halo's process.
Still a halo light wouldn't be considered a historic light. But neither with the light bulb. Our channel letters in the downtown, I I would argue that wouldn't necessarily be historic either.
Yeah. Mister Moore.
Um. So the planning commission's decision. Came before the downtown design committee had an opportunity to review this, in fact, it's my understanding. That. Um a planning commission member reached out to you after this decision was made. With the thought that it was an oversight that it had not been sent to the design committee. That's my understanding, is that correct?
I I wouldn't say that would be the reason, I think it was, it came here before that, it was about the same time, so just to say it's because that. What the uh that's saying commissioner wouldn't be fair, I could say.
So the planning mission hasn't had an opportunity to look at this. In light of the design committee decision.
Right, because the planning commission, uh the design committee answers to the D N B. Um this, the sign committee answers to the planning commission, so the sign committee met three, three times prior to. A recommendation of a planning commission. And then it came here to City Council, right, that's, and then it went to the design committee.
So once again, planning commission hasn't had the benefit of discussion in light of the design committee decision. Correct, okay. You know, I referred to the master plan on this, which says implementation of community identity includes. Maintaining the historic character of the downtown, page sixty five, appropriate building renovations, you know. I renovations, I don't know if this is officially a renovation, but certainly signage, um excuse me, certainly lighting. Is part of the appearance of a building in a historic district, and while I agree with what you say, it would not be considered a historic. Light, a light bulb isn't, I mean, I don't think we're gonna go back to gas at this point. Um and certainly, there's a difference between the halo light. And the lights that exist now, so that's just my point, so we also have Ms. Goodman here, and I don't know if she has any input. And there may be people in the audience, we have. Thank you.
Ms. Walker.
Sure, so just to reiterate the process that's transpired already, first, it was evaluated by the planning commission. And unanimously approved, then it went to the sign committee.
No, no, it was. Went to the sign committee first and then the planning commission.
Okay, went to the sign committee first, was unanimously approved, then went to the planning commission, was unanimously approved. And then went to the downtown management's board, design committee, and was unanimously turned out.
That's true.
Thank you.
Derek.
In in the discussions in the sign committee, were they considering, it's considering the entire town? And that include discussions on impact to downtown in in their discussions? Correct, um there's a member of the same committee who's actually a member of D N B and the. Business owner downtown who, and that was part of the discussion as well.
Are there any halo signs currently downtown?
Yes.
And that's. I don't remember, but you might as well tell everybody where it is, what is this?
There there's a, there's a small handful. Um that previously hadn't been approved. Some prior to ordinance, some through. Just doing what you want, um.
With the lack of enforcement.
Correct.
Prior to you, you.
Uh yeah, I I don't know if it was an enforcement as much of it, it might have been just uh an oversight to not seize, it's very. Difficult. Although I'm thinking in particular, I. I mean, the um. Lost Village Progy one in particular, is very subtle. But it is, I would consider a uh halo with sign, and I have sent a letter out on that one. Prior to this whole situation.
Mayor.
Ms. Walker.
If I may, so it would be really helpful for me to, in order to make a decision, I had to Google what a halo light sign is. And so I didn't have any reference to a real context of a real decision, and I realized that the policy. Was regardless of context or who is asking for halo right sign. Uh forgiveness, as opposed to permission, because they're already in place, so I could have like real life. Um examples would be really helpful for me.
Yeah, it's not. It's not responding.
You mentioned Lost World Progies, yes.
You can just Google it, yeah, it's quite. I don't know what's doing. Halo it signs, yeah. This scroll down. Yeah, either one's fine. Yeah. Sure. So I'm just with the images. So this would be a good representation right there on that one. They they are, yes, there's. Was one that didn't fall in line, and now I'm not seeing it, so I was hesitant to say they all are. In the ordinance, Zach, is there a color, I saw that um neutral light tones, define what that means. I would say something that's not a neon, you know, white colors, um.
Okay.
You know, these ones, I would say are not, that would be, these two would be neutral tones to me.
Okay.
Um but you know, co- brighter colors, but like whites and light blues.
But.
For the for the light color.
Mayor. If I may, um so that gets me a little bit closer, because this is exactly the same activity that I did over the course of the weekend. Um so specifically, we're talking about Lost World Progies and the Quiet Moose's um. Older building on Mitchell Street. And then the Quiet Moose's new location as well. Across the street, they all have a word signage.
The the new one for sure.
Okay, and then is there any other examples within the context of downtown Pata ski?
There's um. I don't have it in front of me, um. In front of me, there there's one um that's been there for a long time.
Okay.
Um that could, that would fall into there, but that was well before the ordinance.
Thank you.
Chico's, thank you, I knew it was to my tongue.
Mister. Shields.
Thank you, I, uh so can you speak to the industry, is this, and is this with new technology, LEDs, is this becoming? Something where. Um you you see, you'd see a lot of businesses transitioning to this type of sign, is this a, is this a new? A new trend that would um would enable local businesses to succeed? You know, I'm, to say you're gonna succeed because of a sign, I would hope your margins aren't that slim. But I'm not a business owner, um. It is a newer sign in terms of regulation, uh it it took longer to to find. Cities that really had an in-depth explanation of of what. The sign committee was imagining. When they're envisioning this. Um and that's why you'll see the the uh the knit rather than aluminum or candle powder, that's kind of the new. Way to measure these signs, so kind of relying on um. The new sign companies having that sort of technology, like, oh, it's just, when we're doing these things, we're gonna measure it, and that's, it's just easier for us and. Trying to make that process easier, not just for us, but for them as well. So I don't know if I answered your question and then some, but.
That was a great.
A great try, thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious tonight, uh so the, if if um. How how would we, those three additional or three existing ones, if uh an ordinance was. Was changed so that it was permitted, these type of signs are permitted in the town, but not downtown, would those be grandfathered in? What would be the process for handling those existing ones? So the the Chico's one. Would be one that would be grandfathered in those pre-ordinance, um and enforcement might have sent out or wave. Gosh, I couldn't tell you when at this point, but there was one sent off it for the lost village progy, um. The the quiet moose one, I've been waiting to see what happens here before I do any certain enforcement. There's no need to pester around, and there's no need to, you know, create more work for me, if if it were to pass, then. We'll just chalk it up to it happened. If it's not to pass, then I'll move forward with enforcement. Thanks, thanks, Zach.
Where are we on historic district? Situation. Becky.
Um the store, your study has been knocked out since COVID banner. Needs to be reimagined, decked out by, we give content. We give them approach to how we get that working out, but. There has. I have not had, have that player in my office. Nothing time to do. We will out there, a new player at city hall. Overcame, so.
Do you envision the entire downtown being historic, the historic district, is that what you you are looking at or? Is that, what is the intention of the city as far as the historic district?
Would only be the downtown. And it might not be all of them. It would send. So you may draw a map of where the doctor district should be, and there are guidelines that belong to that map being drawn. It did not include to wonder if he's late. There's not, there are no buildings there, it's dark. There aren't even any contributing properties to back up to two hundred years away. It didn't include what the staff or the board committee. Multi- or sub that property. In in the map, in the morning time. What work that they did was they drew a map of where the district should be and then their features. Buildings.
Would. Would halo light on a building? Uh. Challenge the ability of a building to be accepted as a historic building? Or a district?
I can tell you that it would not be. A lot of in the district, that would be one of the things, the store district will have lots and lots of things, there are a lot and a lot, and I'm sure that that would be one thing. That was could be without.
So what would happen to those that are already there?
Well, the district, if the district were approved by the state, all of those buildings would be accepted as part of the district. If they're not contributing well enough, a whole district is approved. If they're not gonna take anything. Down, so it's maybe taking down that already that.
It's, you can certainly have non-contributing buildings within a historic district.
Yeah.
But these buildings could be contributing, and yet they still have sign on them, they're to take a lot of time. So. You just wanna be, when you're going for um, these are the right of the district, you just wanna make very sure that you have enough quality. Um. Building structure of architecture integrity of your entire.
Do we have that now?
I would be sure, although we can turn that, but I would say yes.
Okay.
I would definitely say yes.
Okay.
And we're gonna be need for technical.
Okay.
Mister Moore.
As a history major, I just want to say how precious this commodity is that we have downtown. And as someone who helps out a friend that owns Wardenize Gallery downtown, I can tell you how many people. Come into that store talking about how, one of the reasons they come to Pata ski is because of that. Historic downtown, and so it has economic value in addition to just the value of it. Reflecting history, I think it's really important that we maintain that. I think this lighting in other areas, I have no problem with it, but downtown to me, and. Everything's in the eye of the holder, to me, this does not look like historic lighting. Um so I would really encourage us to allow the. Not not to pass this ordinance as is.
I have mixed feelings about it, uh. I question whether. These halo lights are, you know. Do we have a right to tell these buil- businesses that are. At this point, not in a historic district. To have to. Adhere to what we believe. Uh. Reg- regulates historic buildings or not. Um I I just have a problem with uh taking away the rights of 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 the people that own these buildings as well. I I do think that I look at the quiet moose and as it is now, I think it's a very appealing uh clean. Uh. Sign, I don't see it as a, you know, I know one across the street that's blaring neon red. That I think is. A bit much, um I I don't see at this point, if you're talking of halo lights of not like the uh. Red, blue background lights, but you're more or less just hi- highlighting simp- uh simplicity. I I just don't see a a major problem in that, um. Mister Moore.
With with due respect, though, to the mayor, if our master plan. With with due respect, though, to the mayor, if our master plan says. In a key component, that implementation of community identity includes maintaining the historic character of downtown. How do we manifest that? To me, this is an aspect of how we manifest that.
Miss Walker.
Mayor, if I may, thank you, um. When I was deliberating this over the course of this weekend, and also in previous meetings, obviously, this has come to us uh previously before. Um, I felt like it was really like we were making a decision based on aesthetics, and I was really struggling with that, because I don't believe that. You know, policy creation as city council members, we're not here to talk about aesthetics. Um, we're here to talk about policy that makes sense for everybody and why we do these things. So we also have several vacant historic buildings in downtown Petoskey, and I think in the context of the Quiet Moose. They did an excellent job of renovating a building that was a little bit obsolete as a. Oversized bank building that wasn't getting a lot of use, so I see them as an ideal example. And I appreciate you, Zach, bringing the master plan with you, and I I really, that gives me a lot of hope, because I I like that you brought it with you to the meeting. Uh uh, of course, could we often reference it as we're studying and going through our our meeting minutes as well? Um, so I really think that this has been vetted through three different committees. And I feel very comfortable moving forward and approving. The Halo with signs for downtown Petoskey. And as a ordinance amendment.
Mister Shields. So I am wondering, you mean, this can we can speak to this? Um, so yeah, there's, I think there's, my opinion is uh is a striking imbalance of of bearing. We have a couple of different values as a community, that is our historic buildings and being a. A progressive community willing to grow and expand and and adapt to new um attractive uh uh business designs. So we have, we have this this economic uh value, this historic character value, I I I'm curious, so to. Retain historical character of our downtown, I I would say retaining small. Units, small business places for small local businesses to to um exist in, uh the facade, uh. Um, regulations, rules of our downtown here, uh and then um. I guess those are the two that come to mind, what is, are there any other um aspects that to retain a historical downtown character that? Uh are are important to um I I define someplace?
I think that everything with another downtown has that in mind, street, car, narrow, uh sidewalks, our buildings are broader than the curb. Um, the planning, the architect, the lighting that's existing, there are very few, there are very short to have lighting other than. Who's neck lines, which is what we recommended in design guidelines that we did in. Fifteen years ago now, that have been standard, the one we give inside rent is not internal lighting, we're gonna sign last number. Um, if the town is. Visit because it's, it because it's a real place, but also we think that our employment and community character. And we hear that when we market it that way, all they want. Um, it was the thing of the committee. These handles are are very nice-looking signs, but not appropriate to the historic. Downtown, they look better, they look great, that's true, all on the end of town, any place throughout the city, back. Committee did say that in their deliberations is that we like these, they're great, but not for downtown. It's a different animal, and it looks different on purpose, you need to know when we get to downtown, that you're there, and you understand that you're there. By gas land, by our pure land, um that are mystery, by the moment of the of the roads, the road, the trees, the old town. All these other things that you design, um, including downtown, only here, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, discussion council. Anyone wish to entertain a motion?
What for?
Uh. You don't do that till after the motion, then you'd have discussion. Yep, it's a process. Miss Walker.
Yeah, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve the sign ordinance amendments to allow for halo illuminated signs.
Do I have a second? So quick uh process clarification, if. If this motion, and Miss Walker, was voted down, what would be the result? Would the result be? Um, this ordinance dies, or would it go back to the process? That's the other option that we're given, the staff gave us. Which would be it going back through committees.
Go ahead.
Okay, I may for answer. If this motion were to fail, then it would just sit there unless there was a new motion to. To do the alternate option.
Got it.
Uh, it would come up at the next meeting, so.
Whether it be in no second.
I will second the motion, mayor.
Okay, so I have a motion from Miss Walker, second from Mister Shields, and the other discussion council. This is your opportunity as public, come up to the mic, give us your full name, full address. And you have a few minutes to talk to council, not the audience, to council regarding this issue, is there anyone that wishes to speak to council at this time? Please come forward.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Justin Rashid, uh ten fifteen East Mitchell Street. What is so different about this kind of illumination? But it was a spot revision or rewrite to our ordinance. I understand the impulse to revise an ordinance to accommodate one applicant or one particular style example. The planners do not find particularly objectionable. That's not good process, and it does not result in good policy. We should stand by the values and standards reflected in existing ordinance for the benefit of everyone. And we're taking a complete review of the style elements of the entire ordinance. Because any other approach may grant advantages to new applicants or the existing businesses, for example. Just. But then you signed a couple of years ago. In keeping with the ordinance. See a new applicant come along. And suddenly, the ordinance is rewritten to accommodate about one sign style. Element, reverse channel letters, fence lit, edulet, aluminum backlit, aluminum backlit. Signs with light directed against the back panel, with illumination showing on through lettering cutouts. All these fine distinctions will ultimately erode if we open the store, implement halo with signs. And the ordinance against certain kinds of illumination will ultimately be deemed unenforceable. We already are experiencing this enforcement erosion with regard to some illuminated signs downtown. So we must keep the ordinance clear and unequivocal, unequivocal, and simple to enforce. No, I personally believe that this style of sign is out of sync. With the unique small-town downtown character that was reinforced in our master plan repeatedly over many years. It is urban, suburban mall, not small-town historic, not in keeping with the existing district. Empire, our Zibo, Chief Petoskey, our gaslights, our Hemingway statue, for example. So if it is the case that we no longer care about all that stuff, and you've said about our small downtown historic character that is in our master plan? Then let's review what was in our master plan. But I believe we should celebrate and uphold those key aspects of our existing ordinance that keep us authentically unique. This change would be another erosion of our land-time downtown shopping environment district. That moves us in the direction of looking common, suburban. And more like every other commercial district downstate. I'm sure we've all gained the criticism of people moving up here from early to our south. They're attracted here by our authentic small-town historic character. We get, we come from all the places they just moved away from. Our existing sign ordinance is one of the ways we retain the character and the values that make us the unique small-town that we are. That draws so much economic activity to our town. Our uniqueness makes it great for retail and restaurants. The planning commission made its decision about the recommendation of the design without the, absent the recommendation of the design committee this time. And without consideration of different ordinance within the downtown central business district from the rest of the city. I think the pivotal thing for me is uh an inspiring person who you are more than indebted to, Rick Newman, who's on the planning commission. And who will lead the ordinance to accommodate this one sign. And is also on the design committee. After further consideration, he said to us, you know. I went through the downtown at night. Which I haven't done after dark in a long time, and I realized. We really don't have a limited signs downtown, other than with the old-fashioned kind of writing. And. I'm afraid this would be a much bigger change than I realized. And he changed the way he voted, he voted unanimously as a chair of our committee. To not change the ordinance. To me, that speaks volumes, and I hope you you listen, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time? Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to council at this time?
No.
No? And anyone else? Nope, I'm gonna go to city clerk Beck for Roll.
Walker, yes, Shields?
No.
DeMore, nay. Murphy?
No.
Next. New business. Authorization to enter an intergovernmental professional services agreement with the Petoskey schools. For a school resource officer, and I turn it over to city manager Horn.
Thank you, mayor, um I'm gonna uh deflect to Director Breed, uh Director Breed spent a lot of time with Petoskey Schools. Working back and forth, as well as our legal team, uh putting this uh agreement together. I will say Petoskey's school system unanimously approved this agreement in front of you at at their regular meeting in November. This is obviously a shared uh school resource officer position. Um, certainly something that I think both parties um are in agreement on as far as the need. And so I think this agreement reflects that, I will uh kind of turn it over to Director Breed for any. Um, anything you need to fill in this body, or be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mister Horn.
Do you want to give us a little summation?
Certainly, uh. If within your packet, you have a copy of the agreement as well as a job description. Historically, uh, Petoskey Public Safety Department did have a school resource officer. And that financial burden was shared fifty-fifty with the school. When our economy turned. Ten, twelve years ago, we were unable to continue that, so that program was discontinued. As our economy has improved. We have made. Serious effort to try to reinstate that position, I I think we have a responsibility to the school. I think it's very important to the school and to the students that attend the school. So over the last several years, working with school administration, we have. Gradually been implementing this back into existence, but. The public safety department simply could not handle the financial burden. We tried several different methods, uh scheduling methods. The school then stepped up and and volunteered to start contributing financially. We have an officer that is a perfect fit for the school system. He is a certified school resource officer, can we continue to keep him certified annually? And. We have come to the point that in order to maintain this program and to get out of this program. What we need to get out of it and what the student body needs to get out of it, this needs to be a full-time position. I think that the city of Petoskey is in a position to to do that. Through our public safety department with this intergovernmental agreement with the school. They're willing to split the cost at fifty percent, plus a small percentage to help cover some of. The administrative fees and the accessory fees that would go along with that officer. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think this is a great opportunity. Not just to enforce safety within our public school systems. Or to lend a hand to doing that, but I think it's also important for the public, which are younger people. To have an opportunity to interact. With a police officer on another, other than a traffic stop, a serving a warrant, something along that line. I think this is really positive step by the city to establish a relationship so that kids growing up have a better. Understanding about a police officer, maybe about the careers that are available there, but also about the relationship between our public safety. And and the general public, so I I think this is just, you know. Fantastic.
I couldn't agree more, it's about those relationships.
Yeah, Mister Moore.
Um, one area of concern that I initially had was clarifying scope of work, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate. Uh efforts by the department and the school district and council. To include a le- attachment A that really delineates the scope of the work, which I think is very beneficial. And then, second of all, also kudos to all just mentioned. For providing a mediation provision as frontline problem solving, I think that's very progressive and meaningful. It preserves litigation as needed, hopefully never, but the fact that we, everyone would sit down and use a mediation method as problem solving, I think is great modeling also. Uh, not only for young people, but for adults in the community, so thanks to all for that inclusion.
Who else? Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion first from Mister Moore.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second from Mister Shields, and the other discussion council. Does the public wish to speak? Please, come on down. Thank you for waiting.
I'm Denise Petoskey in Dishna Khas, the Dasege in Donjaba, um Beijig, Niuin, Beijig, Jungabo, Amikana. I'm Denise Petoskey, I live at one four one Balsam Avenue in Petoskey. Um, I just wanna encourage your support of this um proposal in front of you. Um, the schools are really excited to have a full-time resource officer, there's definitely a need for it. Um, as you can see from the contract in front of you, I serve as the secretary for the school board in Petoskey, and. Every month, we have parents come to our school board meetings concerned about the safety of their children. And I think having a school resource officer um lets them know that there is um a plan in place. And there are officers in Petoskey that know how to get into the schools, that know the way out of the schools. And there are officers in Petoskey that know how to get into the schools, that know the way out of the schools, and know where the classrooms are. I think it's really important. Um I do want to let you know that we are exploring other funding options. Uh the governor's budget for next year includes some school safety money and we're pursuing that. So hopefully your support is temporary, but um I'd definitely like to encourage it for twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else wish to speak to council? Anyone online wish to speak to council? I go to Sarah Beck for role.
Demore?
Aye.
Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Next, the adoption of a proposed resolution approving assessor contact. As required by the state. I turn it over to city manager Horn for update.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. The the next three items uh are really housekeeping items, so hopefully we'll uh. We'll get through these fairly quickly. Um essentially, this item is is um. A contact updating our contact. As as we all know, we have a new contractual assessor. This is just providing. A certification to the state regarding contact information that needs to be submitted. Um taxpayers know how to contact our consultant and the state knows. Uh the current state of our assessing department.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Five seconds. Second motion from this Demore, second from Mr. Shields. Any other discussion? I go to quarterback for role.
Demore?
Aye.
Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes four zero. Next, the adoption of a proposed resolution approving the two thousand twenty-three poverty exemption exemption policy and guidelines. So that I'll turn it over to city manager Horn.
Thank you, mayor. This is an annual um resolution that is considered by council that takes into account. Um certain thresholds um as as dictated by the General Property Tax Act, uh looking at um. Uh poverty guidelines that are adjusted based on state guidance, based on the number of persons. Uh in in the home and that income level as well as well as looking at um. Overall amount of assets to determine uh that poverty level of threshold. So this is an annual process. Obviously, uh numbers get uh changed based on the current state of the economy. And and so this resolution kind of makes that annual update and uh will be. Certified and move forward um accordingly. So our board of review will who will receive these uh applications. Um can can follow our guidelines, follow follow this resolution uh as required.
How do these people get notification or know about this availability?
It is on our website. Um there's state guidance as well. Um certainly, they can contact us, contact our assessor. And get further further guidance and input on whether they meet certain thresholds. But there is an application process that's included in your packet. It's a form by the Department of Treasury that they would need to submit. Um and then obviously it's reviewed by our board of review um as well. Just make sure that um. All the thresholds are met are met.
Do we have any? How many people or do we have people on this uh from last year at this point?
I am uncertain at this point.
Mayor.
Ms. Walker.
Um Shane, can you remind me? Now, we've obviously we have to do this. We have to renew this policy every year. Can you remind me? When people apply, is there a fund that's available through the state or federal government that compensates a city or municipality? For the loss of tax revenue from the poverty exemption? Is that something that um a city is reimbursed for? Or does that just is like a placeholder where you just don't get that tax money for that fiscal year?
Yeah, I don't I don't believe there's any any reimbursement from the state, so we would just lose that that uh tax revenue.
I'll be happy to make a motion to approve the poverty tax. I'm sorry, poverty exemption resolution for the twenty twenty-three year.
Oh, second motion from Ms. Walker, second from Mr. Shields. Any other discussion?
Just just real quickly for the record, I think it's important to note that this. Income and asset test that we established is based on criteria from the Michigan Department of Treasury. Which is almost uniformly utilized by communities across Michigan. So if anyone's curious, that's the standard.
Great point.
Be no other discussion. This public wish to weigh in on this. If there are, I'd go to city clerk Beck for role.
Walker?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Demore?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes. Four zero. Next on the agenda, new business D is the adoption of a proposed resolution approving the two thousand twenty-three city council meeting schedule. Please uh take a look at it. So if you have a question, I'll miss Demore.
So um in looking at some of these dates, I'll just note some things that I noticed for others' consideration. In January, those two weeks, ninth and sixteenth, are sequential. As opposed to every other week and Monday, the sixteenth is MLK Day. So I don't know if that matters to folks or not. Um April third is the last day of spring break here in Petoskey. So I thought we might look at the tenth and the twenty-fourth. And I did, I also didn't know how everybody might feel about July third. So. Those are the things I offer for others' consideration.
Anyone wish to weigh in? Mr. Shields?
So April third is and Petoskey's from break.
Mm-hmm. That's the last day of spring break.
Last day. Oh, because I do that extra day. Yeah. I suppose I would be okay with something that to the tenth then, um but I could, I'm I'm okay either way.
Ms. Walker, who's still?
Um I'm just reviewing. I didn't recognize that January and January ninth and the sixteenth were concurrent. So um. And MLK is the sixteenth, but that's a federal holiday. So I know like at the county, we don't observe federal holidays. I don't know about the city municipality. Um so. Uh because the first this first Monday of January is the second, so I'm assuming that's why. It was pushed to the ninth and the sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. I also had a question about Monday, July the third. Other than that, I and I'm open to changing those those days as well if it's determined that that's best.
Just for further feedback, um we had discussed January ninth as a. Um kind of a work session date. That was one. This is maybe a month or two back when we talked about uh potential work session topics. I kind of figured based on past that the first meeting. Um January second, actually, that's a holiday for the city. So we would not be here. Obviously, we can still come in for a meeting and that's fine if that's your desire. Um. So based on your further input, keeping the ninth was um was a date that we had penciled in as a. Um as a work session day, looking at our our action plan, action items. That obviously can be uh moved as well. Um. So that's the reason for for those back-to-back um dates in January. And I really, I wanted to try to keep, and this is the point of this discussion, is to get that feedback. I I didn't want to take any. I don't want to take any uh latitude here. I wanted to get your feedback, especially like on July third and those. Uh dates. So we'll we'll take your input and feedback and and uh adjust accordingly.
Ms. Walker.
I think uh if I may, uh Councilwoman Demore's suggestion on. Perhaps doing the same thing with January that we with April that we did with January and. Because that Monday, April the third, is the last day of spring break. I also didn't line it up with my Petoskey public schools calendar, so thank you for that, Tina. Um.
In July.
Well, July the third, I I. I don't know, organizationally, it's just such a busy day and we're preparing for um the Fourth of July. Um as a city.
So you're okay with moving that to the town?
Monday, July the tenth.
Is there enough business of the city to merit? A meeting one week apart?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to.
And that's also we have our award conventions and our city conventions.
Award convention is.
Is July.
July, the next weekend that we.
Be keeping the one meeting in July.
One meeting in July and for the April, do you? You want to do a second, the tenth?
Could be the tenth and the twenty-fourth if you shifted it.
Well, but then you got a week to the May fifth first. It's only a week. That's a week away. April's got thirty days, so it would be one week. So if you move it.
It's something like last year we had one meeting in April, so.
We had one in April and we had one, you know.
It's if we are on the path of doing the special sessions, we could we could a work session, we could. Take it off here and and um have we know that we have an opportunity in April sometime to have a work session.
Okay, so we take out two city council meeting days. One would be April third and the other one would be July third. So we would not be meeting those two two times, correct? And we'll schedule other Monday Mondays for this work session piece that you've requested. Okay.
Thank you.
Does that sound good?
And then just so I'm clear, Monday, January ninth, would you want that as a work session? Or do you want that as a actual meeting and only have January sixteen?
I would prefer to keep Jan- I was prepared. I just prefer to keep January ninth as a regular meeting. That if we wanted to do a work session, it would be like before that.
I'm good.
Like at five thirty or something?
Yeah.
Just to keep the schedule and city council meetings uh consistent.
And then then would the second January meeting be on the sixteenth or the twenty-third?
Well, again, if you move it to the twenty-third. You're you're.
Or we could move it one day. Of observance of MLK.
About one day.
Uh that would be the DMV meeting.
Okay.
So.
Yes, sort of in a but all the different.
No. No. No.
City convention is happening in July for me, please.
We can do the twenty the sixth and the twenty-third.
Ninth and the twenty. Okay, okay, wait.
That ninth of January, the twenty-third of January, and that's a two-week spot to come to February sixth.
That's right.
So are you good with that? Are you good with that, council?
Sure.
We have figured that out. That that night could be a regular meeting.
Okay.
So so the changes are January ninth and January twenty-third will be a regular session council meeting minute meetings.
Okay.
April third, we will not be meeting.
July.
July third, we will not be meeting.
And. I'm gonna have to look that up.
Okay.
What?
It uh ward and city conventions.
That's the weekend. That's the week after the Monday that's.
It's. It's either the second full week in July or possibly could be the week of the seventeenth. I will work tomorrow and.
Okay.
You guys?
Okay. There's this war conventions on a Monday and the city convention follows on that that same Wednesday of that week. Okay. Thank you.
Which would be the eleventh. Or the eleventh and thirteen.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the proposed a proposed resolution with the described changes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, mayor.
I have a second from uh Mr. Shields. A first, I have a motion from Mr. Shields. And a second from Mr. Walker. Any other discussions? Just go for it. Tell me the nurses of this is here.
Yes, some more.
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes. I'm good for an hour and twenty minutes. Well, that's why we're in a good situation here. Next, what we got next is uh. Uh is the adoption of a proposed resolution. Excuse me. We're going to go to closed session. We'll have city council comments. Then we'll have a motion for a closed session. We will not. Be taking any other business before the council or to you. After that meeting, we'll come in and simply adjourn. And it's a a uh. Required authorization to to go to closed session. Do I have a motion? So we do that. Public comments. Community comments, council comments. Does anything you can say, Ms. Walker?
Sure. I thank you, mayor, for the opportunity to deliberate and discuss and review the. The um items that were on our agenda tonight. I always like a a good discussion and. Despite having differences in opinion, I think that um we do a pretty good job of hearing and evaluating and. And moving forward. So I appreciate being and it's a privilege to be part of that process. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Shields? Uh I got a chance to go through the Puxinak master plan. I'll be. Not as not as thorough as I like, but I I noticed the section on, I was appreciative that it was a page on the. Uh management of our natural eight hundred plus acres of natural lands that we as a community own and manage. And I I I do not feel like we are up to the standards that I think we should be on managing those natural areas. I think we potentially are dropping the ball on the care of those lands, potential um. Uh sustainable use of those lands. And so I I I would like. For uh Mr. Klingel Smith, when when he I think I understand he's presenting in the near future, January, January, can. Uh to also um address some of what uh uh we are doing, uh what management plans, what um. Uh what ways we can look to steward those those eight hundred plus acres that we uh are are in the city's care. So um yeah, I'm hoping that he will answer some more questions or we can have a discussion on those on those lands.
Mr. Moore?
I will just second uh Councilwoman Walker's comments. Uh I think there's nothing more important in good governance than civil constructive dialogue. Where we have different ideas and sometimes we change our mind and sometimes we don't. Uh I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Uh I think that we actually own six square miles outside the city limits, so I think the numbers more are more like thirty-five hundred acres. I don't know if you knew that, but. We own about thirty-five hundred acres outside the city limits. Uh I just want to reiterate what an unbelievable gathering of people for uh the lighting of the tree. Becky, congratulations on the great job. You got, yes.
It is.
No, but you know what? Michelle Channard. I had so many people come by and go, God, was she great? This music was fantastic. And I I think it was like, it just. Turned on the the juices of people and all the kids that were there with Santa Claus. What a what a celebration. I think, you know, we need more of those. Um with no further ado, I guess I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Uh I move that we move into closed session pursuant to section eight prints E and eight prints H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
From Mr. Moore, second from Ms. Walker, and I'll go to vote.
Demore?
Aye.
Walker?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Have a good evening. Congratulations, Rocky.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. Police chief breed.